Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this August 12th, 2024, meeting of the City of Coolidge City Council, a regular meeting to order, and please join me in the budget meetings.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Norm would you call the roll? Please.
Mayor. Councilmember Tom Bagnone.
Present.
Councilmember Audrey Saavedra.
Audrey, that's you.
Audrey?
You there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes?
Yeah, she's there.
Councilmember Steve Hudson.
I'm here. Sorry, it's hard to hear you guys.
Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jackie Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Tatiana Murietta, I don't see her yet, so hopefully she'll show up, and Councilmember Eric Daniels.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Presentations, item three, presentation by City Manager Rick Miller. Rick?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I wanted to make a little presentation. This is my last city council meeting after forty-four years in municipal government. I figured that's a little over a thousand council meetings probably, and multiple Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, but I wanted to share a little presentation with you this evening and talk about the success that we've had in Coolidge. And it's a credit to the leadership on the council, our mayor, our professional staff, and I'm really happy to share this presentation with you tonight and let you think about some of the good things that you really don't think about happening over the last ten years, but a lot of good has happened in this community. I'm really proud of our, of our staff and the accomplishments that we've been able to do for the citizens of Coolidge and for the mayor and council. With that, let me just go ahead and get started. I'm going to take a, probably be about fifteen minutes at the most, but we'll get through these slides pretty quickly. It's just a quick presentation. In our strategic agenda, when I started here, you know, as their city manager, we had just completed a strategic plan, and the ideas that we wanted to achieve, the council, their vision was to make sure that we have a clean and safe city, that we expand our city economy, that we revitalize our downtown, that we have high-performing city organization, that we manage our growth, and we have a more livable city. These are typically found in almost any strategic plan, major policy statements. Kind of going back and reflecting what happened in the last ten years, we had a real serious problem with our fuel tanks at the airport. We had to take these out of the ground or face serious consequences from the EPA. We removed a decades-old fuel tank out of the ground and replaced it with two above-ground fuel tanks. It was quite a little discussion that we had during that process, but we have fuel tanks that now are compliant with EPA rules. Airport annexation, this is something that was attempted a number of years before I got here. We found a creative way to annex the airport by coming off the CAP canal north of Coolidge Avenue, and we annexed our airport in two annexation efforts. The great thing about the annexation is once it was in the city limits, then we start to receive construction sales tax on all the grants that we've been receiving out at our airport where we didn't get construction sales tax before. So this was really an important accomplishment, and I feel really good about being able to do that. Airport infrastructure, significant investment in airport improvements in the last ten years, grants totaling over thirteen and a half million dollars in the last ten years. It does not include the city's matching funds and also private investment out there. A slide to the right is the Arizona Water Company put in a large water storage tank, and of course, we've accomplished something that we've been trying to do. On the slide to the left, we have the San Carlos Irrigation Project brought out their new power lines and are able to provide additional power. We still have some work to do there with a substation, but we're, we're moving forward. Airport economic development is happening. On the slide to the left, we have our new Wynn Aviation Hangar that will be under construction. In fact, I think the electrical work is going in right now. We have day craft systems out there making or manufacturing the weaponry for military. See, it's made in Coolidge, Arizona. Of course, ECube is out there along with Complete Parachute Solutions, Terry Glass and his group out there. So we have expanded the economy at the airport quite a bit. We did, we increased, increased our airport revenue on land leases, four hundred and seventy percent in the last ten years, from forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars in two thousand and fourteen to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars in twenty. Significant increase in land leases and which is direct revenue to the airport. Credit to the council on the leases that they've been negotiating out there. Our airport is probably getting close to breaking even, where it used to be a drain on the city's tax base or revenue. Twenty-four hour fire service, very important. I think that we've implemented that. We, through our dedicated and very professional fire department and our fire chief, was able to change our ISO rating from a five to a three. Here again, this accomplishes the safe city. I've put our fire department and our fire chief up against many of, we've had a lot of issues in our community with the pipeline explosion, as you see in the lower left-hand corner. We had a recent incident at Heritage Environmental, but we have a very qualified, very capable fire department providing, making sure in the safety of our citizens. Fire apparatus refurbishments, we've not been buying new equipment. We've been refurbishing some equipment, engine five thirty-four and five thirty-five. This was five thirty-five featured at one of the events where they showcased, you know, a really excellent way to save significant dollars by refurbishing a vehicle rather than buying new. Again, I think that falls under the high-performing city organization and safe city. Technology upgrades in the police department, we've had flux safety cameras installed around the community, mobile communications, drone technology. We had a unfortunate lightning strike in this building a few years ago, but we were able to upgrade a lot of our telecommunications, mobile devices, and our radio frequencies. You can really, our, our police department says it's night and day over what it used to be, where you'd have little dark spots around the area. You can pretty much communicate throughout the state now on this system. We contracted jail services with CoreCivic, saving the city about a hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents per detainee on day one, on the day one stay, over what we were being charged by Penale County Jail. Every day after that first day of stay, there's still the savings, but that first day was significant, and we're very fortunate to be partnering with CoreCivic to have them detain our non-felony detainees. Paid over almost ten million dollars in unfunded public safety personnel retirement system, thereby reducing the city's matching obligation per new public safety employee hired. Many cities went into debt. They went out and borrowed a lot of money to pay. We paid cash and are pretty well in line with what other employees, you know, we pay in, in terms of our matching obligations in the retirement system. Credit goes to Gabe Garcia, our finance director, for, you know, being innovative in these, in these issues to try to save the city more money. Constructed the new aquatics facility and fixed years-old leaking underground San Carlos irrigation pipe within the Northern Avenue. This was a geo bond, very important project to the city. Our old pool was about ready to be terminated because of the safety issues there with the chlorine and other things, the leaking underground pipe. The mayor was concerned about that for years and years, and we got that done. Interesting thing about this project, when we did the voter information pamphlet, we forecasted the geo bonds and the staff assumed a twenty-year repayment at an interest rate of four percent, an average tax rate of seventy-three cents, and a total principal and interest payments of seven million, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Based on the financing that we secured, the city pays off the bonds in ten years rather than twenty years at an interest rate of one point two six percent with total payments of five million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. The forecast contemplated paying two million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred in interest over the twenty years. In reality, the taxpayer only pays three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars in interest, and the Aquatic Center will be paid off in ten years. That's an eighty-four percent reduction in total interest paid and represents almost two million dollars in savings and lowered taxpayers, lowered taxes for the citizens. We guaranteed that we would never impose a secondary tax rate more than fifty cents in anything over fifty cents. We promised that we would pay out of our general fund. Well, our property tax levy's been around twenty-eight cents, well below the fifty cents that we said that would, that would, that it would be. Milled several miles of local streets, replaced with double-chip and fog seal. I don't know the exact mileage, but it, you know, there's been, there's been a lot of street work around town. Saved energy costs by initiating solar array at our wastewater treatment facility. This investment was made, obviously, it costs the city money, but the savings that we have on our electricity bills pays for the, the cost of the solar panels, and when they're paid off, it's only, it only gets better. Also had the savings of energy costs by replacing the old streetlights with the LED lighting. In our two thousand and fourteen annual streetlight electricity cost, a hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars. In two thousand and twenty-four, our annual cost was a hundred and five thousand, four hundred and, five hundred and forty-six, in spite of the electricity rate increases. So we're saving significant dollars on these LED lights, and they last a long time. No longer pay the maintenance fee to Arizona Public Service. Saved water and energy costs by replacing the wastewater treatment plant, Headworks Auger with a bar pump to reduce the sludge that enters into the aerated lagoon system. Mark Voss and, and Zach Tate, those guys are unbelievable. We've got two excellent employees out there and other laborers that are saving the city significantly. I would like to applaud both of these employees for obtaining their certifications. I think Zach just passed his operator four license, and I know Mark is doing, is moving on up there as well. I think he's a three, I believe, right? They removed years of accumulated sludge from the treatment ponds using a sludge pump and an old water truck. Cost me a steak dinner, but I was happy to pay that. Those guys went out there and rather than buy a very expensive piece of equipment and or go out and contract to have the sludge removal done, it, it, a lot of money. They, they were innovative. They went in and bought the tractor and a sludge or trash pump and pumped the, this sludge out of the lagoon into this old refurbished water truck, and then they went out and put it on fields, saving the city's significant money. Repaired and started initial operation of treated effluent delivery system to nearby farmland. This system was built years ago but never implemented. We ended up with getting a groundwater storage facility approved through the Arizona Department of Water Resources. We now put our effluent on farmland rather than the land we used to put it on so we can begin to receive long-term storage credits for this water. Again, another important resource to the city and a good reuse of the reclaimed water. We did, as I mentioned, we did receive the Arizona Department of Water Resources approval of the city's groundwater. That was a, a long process. At one time, we were told that that couldn't be done. We're one of the few cities in the state of Arizona that actually did it and are benefiting greatly. This map illustrates the groundwater storage facility right now. We're putting the effluent down here just south of the plant on this farmland. We received approval of a two oh eight plan amendment. Took us a little over two years to get this plan approved. The important thing is we increased the two oh eight planning area boundary to include the area where Sandia is located. So if Sandia develops someday, we'll make sure that that development takes their effluent and puts it into our wastewater treatment plant. We have a large lift station out there with plenty of capacity to accept that effluent, and we want that coming into our wastewater treatment plant so we can continue to receive long-term storage credits. This was an important part of that process to get that included in our planning area. The city actually digitized through a consultant camera assessment of all of our city manholes and started replacing critically damaged ones and rehabbing others. You can see some of the significant damage in these older manholes and what it looks like now. Major change. This is ongoing. We're fortunate to have a very complete picture of all of our manholes throughout the city. We're working on those that are in major need of repair. We're leaps and bounds ahead of other cities in this effort. Oftentimes, these things are just overlooked, they're underground, nobody worries about them until somebody falls into one or a wheel goes into one. We don't want that to happen in our community, so very important that we got those things taken care of. We purchased the Felix Construction Building for the city's new Terry Hoover Senior Public Works. You know, I, I, I'm very fond of the picture in the middle of Terry Hoover, a great dedicated city employee, Terry Hoover Senior, who committed his life to the city and was honored to, and I know the council was honored to name this facility after him. We were fortunate, Felix Construction turned the city over to us. We didn't have to build a new one. We got a great buy on this. We have great employees working out of this facility in a, in a very nice, modern public works building. Assumed the lease agreement between the Coolidge School District and the Performing Arts Center Foundation and purchased $100,000. We entered into several leases in that building with the Arizona Water Company, Alluvian Communications, the Chamber of Commerce, and Papa's Kids. The leases, you know, help again with the maintenance of the place. Arizona Water Company, they prepaid their leases to allow us to completely redo the roof on that building up front, which was a major expense. Received ADQ certificate of closure on the old municipal landfill. Will continue methane and water quality monitoring. This will keep our mayor out of jail. He used to get some real threatening letters by Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, and it was something that we really didn't have any way to do it. Partnering with Arizona Water Company for dirt, going into privatized solid waste collection allowed us to save enough to where we could go ahead and, and close that landfill. As we privatized our solid waste collection, the customers in Coolidge saves, saved on their monthly bill, and they also received recycling, which was something they hadn't received before. Instal green waste incinerator at the burn pit to improve air quality. This burn pit is out there. You see all the green waste goes in here. When it's operating, very little smoke, unless we catch the burn pit on fire. We don't want to do that. That happened one time. We don't want to do that again. We have safe and smart investment decisions, gaining interest on accounts fiscal year fourteen. City earned twelve thousand and twenty-eight dollars in interest. So far, year-to-date fiscal year twenty-four, we received two million, one hundred thousand earned interest. Significant increase. Again, credit due, our finance director, you know, making safe investments. These are all guaranteed. We're not out investing in things that put the city's money at risk, but it's, he's making investment decisions that earn us money much more than what we earned in the past and more than enough to certainly pay salaries of several people here in this community. Codification of city code ordinances through the American publishing, American legal publishing system. These weren't codified, codified before. We have a code book now, much easier now to, as we update their codes, update our zoning codes and other codes. We work with the publishing company to make sure we have a current book. World-class economic development success, Nicola Motor Company coming into the Coolidge area. World-class success with ECube out at our airport. End-of-life aircraft salvage, they export parts all over the country and all over the world, end-of-life aircraft, and they are, are going to expand significantly out there. We know that, in fact, we have a meeting later this week, or is it next week? Go over and try to remember. With Procter and Gamble, they're going to be coming in, giving us an update of where they are. They purchased the four hundred and thirty acre sites north of Nicola Corporation. Expect to see their construction yard commence here very soon with some of their initial electrical requirements, but that project is moving and will move and will be a great addition to our local economy. We have the Stinger Bridge in Iron here. Obviously, they were instrumental in providing the steel for the Gerald Desmond Bridge in the Port of Long Beach. This is one of the big beams. We have a picture down here in the bottom left. Obviously, they were doing, they were building the border, the wall, received a contractor to do that, do a lot of concrete girders, and build bridges all over the country. World-class, again, economic development, Bright International, they, you know, obviously have been here some time, but they are looking at continued expansion. Renovation of city-owned buildings by the DAV and United. Buildings were vacant, no one was using them. The United Dance Studio came in here, spent, I'm sure it's well over a hundred thousand dollars to upgrade that building for their Reach USA Church and their dance studio. Of course, the DAV went into their building. We used a lot of volunteers and scouts to refurbish the front. They had a lot of local volunteers helped them with their roof, and great to have the DAV operating in the community in our downtown. We painted the city hall, municipal court, library, and fire station, again, all part of our community beautification efforts. Moving forward, one day, we're going to have to figure out what to do. These buildings are, are still beautiful, but they are getting very small for the, the size of the city. One day, we'll have to figure out what to do there. San Carlos Park improvements, you can see the before and afters. DAV and their museum, if you've not been in their museum, I highly recommend it. Great people operating that museum. New roof on the Ramadas in the area, the park looks great. Historic downtown street improvements with Main Street and Central Avenue and Coolidge Avenue. Major downtown revitalization, revitalization effort in leading to a cleaner and more beautiful city. Women's Club improvements, some done inside, some exterior, but we have money in this year's budget to do additional women's club improvements. Believe that we applied for a grant or, or did we get the grant on that?
We were turned down on the grant.
Oh, we turned down, okay. But we do have some funding in this year's budget to continue doing some improvements at the women's club. Thirty-five percent increase in staff pay over the last eight years plus longevity increases. You know, prior, before, eight years ago, there was very little increases in pay. We had to catch up to a lot of our surrounding communities. I think we've done a good job of that right now. We are, you know, very competitive for cities even larger than us in the surrounding area. Increased our city contingency and capital improvement reserves from three point four five three million in two thousand and seventeen to sixteen million today. Did a lot of demolition of neglected residential and business properties to clean up our city more. We've evolved into a renewable energy center of Arizona with five major solar projects producing over a million megawatts of power. You know, I know there's a community attitudes towards green energy and solar and whether it's appropriate or not. We put a lid on any additional solar development within our city limits. Can't say so much for the outside planning area, as the county just recently improved, approved a large one just outside the city. But we, we are seeing a lot of our revenue that you see in our accounts comes from the impact fees off of this as well as the sales tax on construction and eventually some property tax for the first ten years. New traffic signal at Runes Drive in Arizona Boulevard. Received a build grant to improve Hauser and Hannah Roads Railroad crossings in Hannah and a new signalized Highway eighty-seven intersection. This is all a build grant that was, I think, about eighteen million dollars. Right now, Ben was out talking to the state of Arizona. They're doing the design review, design engineering plans for Erika Road and Highway eighty-seven to support the new Procter and Gamble facility. We're also working with the county to do the Erika Road improvement as well as Vale Road improvements to support the Procter and Gamble facility and other, other industries that are looking at that area. Cried through a donation, the Cohen Building downtown. We negotiated the sale of that property for the new Penale Hispanic Council offices. And you can see, this picture was just taken a few days ago. They'll be in this building before the end of the year, I think, is what they're open for. Another major addition and quite a rare sight to see in a, in a revitalizing downtown, to see someone make this kind of an investment in the downtown. We hope that continues. Initiated this, the Adopt a City Street Program, bulk transfer station, free dump days in Coolidge. We did the historic water tower lighting, which is funded by private donations and partnering with the Arizona Water Company. Lot of comments over this. This is going to need some, some maintenance. Some of the lights are beginning to show some age. I think it's primarily the electrical wiring. We do need to work with the water company to upgrade some lights, which we have in storage. We partnered with Arizona Water Company to kick off the Every Drop Counts Campaign for water conservation, again, through the use of the irrigated effluent, and we, we work with our local elementary schools to teach our young children the importance of conservation through a variety of classes one day a year. Historic downtown landscaping made a big difference in our downtown. Electric, electronic message board needs a little bit more maintenance on this one, but at one time, we were just putting up the, the little letters, but this, this does need a little maintenance. These things don't last forever. This side's working, I think the other side's kind of having some difficulty right now. Major housing growth is providing a good balance of housing options in our community. This project here, Casablanca is getting ready to expand again. This was a elderly project off of Spruill. Lots of housing in areas that we didn't think would fill up for years, filled up almost overnight, where we did about seven hundred new home permits a few years ago. We completed the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty-five general plans in-house, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing them in-house. You contract these plans out, you're going to spend two to three hundred thousand dollars a plan at least. This plan is up for all the voters in November. Applaud the Development Services Department and Phil Gerhardt Wright for his efforts in putting that plan together. Coolidge has a very bright and prosperous future, as a community celebrates a hundred years since its founding next year. Hundred years old. Who knows what the next hundred years is going to bring? I would like to thank the employees of the City of Coolidge, this high-performing city organization. I just go through these little sides, slides, some that I've taken for, over the, the years that I've been here, of people that have dedicated, I love this picture up there, that's me in the marijuana farm up there. You never know what the city job brings. I learned all about growing marijuana. But, you know, dedicated employees with a culture of cooperation, a culture of helping each other out. There's no division between departments. If one department is lacking, another fills in and helps out. I, I hope that culture continues. As you can see, I love, I love it when we see down here in Lake Stoolage, I mean, Coolidge, got Mark, no, I think that was probably Zach down the rowboat. We have James and, and our building official over here kind of wrangling in a dinosaur over at our museum, and a lot of dedicated employees up here, the people that were working on the, the rock baskets years ago. It's just nothing but dedicated people, working hard to make Coolidge a better place. Can't say enough about this man who I truly honored and had a lot of gratitude for. Bob hired me here as the Development Services Director. Had a great family and was a great man. Like to thank the city council for their support throughout these years. Like to thank Mayor John Thompson, who worked with very closely. You know, I meet with him weekly to talk about the things that are going on in the community, try to keep, you know, he's the chief executive official or officer of the city. I'm an administrative officer of the city, and we've had a good working relationship, and I'm really going to miss John. I'd like to thank the citizens of Coolidge. I was in Rapid City a few years ago in the summer, wearing my Coolidge shirt, and this is Calvin Coolidge on the corner in Rapid City, South Dakota. I'd like to thank the citizens for their trust. I'm sure that I didn't make a lot of people happy sometimes. In this position, you're not going to make friends, you're going to make some enemies, you're going to make some people upset, but I've always thought and tried to do the best for our city, and, and I know that the mayor and council and our city staff do the same. And with that, I'd like to thank each of you. That's it.
Thank you, Rick. That was a good presentation.
Rick, one thing I will say that you forgot to mention, that's a big thing that you guys accomplished, the Highway eighty-seven in Scousen. Just wanted to add that in there.
Don't jinx it, Eric.
Sure.
It's not done yet.
Hasn't worked with, you haven't worked with it out very long. So that permanent lights and it's not over till it's over. Okay. All right. Moving to call the public. This is the part of the meeting where if any member of the audience has any, they want to address the council, they can come up to the, um, podium there and, and, uh, address us. Is there anybody that signed up, Norma?
No, mayor, no one signed up.
Okay. Seeing nobody approach, then we'll move out of the call of the public. Approval of the minutes. Item four, city council regular meeting, July eighth, twenty twenty-four. City council regular meeting, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Any corrections, comments, anything that anybody wants to say? If not, any motion to act?
Mayor Thompson, I'd like to approve the minutes, uh, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving to public hearings. Item six, to receive public comments regarding the use of the FY twenty twenty-four Federal Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, from the Arizona Department of Housing's regional account and the state special projects account. This is a public hearing. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson and members of council. This is the second public hearing to receive comments and answer any questions for our annual application process for the physical twenty development block grant funds. The first hearing was held on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The city is applying for approximately eighty-four thousand six hundred and seven from the regional is, uh, regional allocation of funds that are allocated through us, to us through central Arizona governments and are planning on applying for seven hundred fifty thousand from the competitive state special projects through Arizona Department of Housing. We've decided to continue on using the regional account funds for housing rehabilitation and emergency repair project for our low-income community members like we have done in previous years. Uh, there are many houses that are in need of substantial repair in our community as we currently have about thirty-five to forty people on our waiting list. This year, we are gonna apply for this, um, for, from the special state special project funds, we're gonna apply for the regional park to help with the phase one cost for this year. Um, later on in the meeting, the resolution giving authorization to submit the physical twenty twenty-four applications will be voted on. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? No. No, I, I don't have any. I don't, I don't think anybody has any. Thank you very much. It's a public hearing, does anybody in the public have anything they want to say about Hearing none. Move out of the public hearing. We'll move into business items for consent. Is there anybody up here that wants any of these items pulled off for individual consideration?
Mayor Thompson, I'd like to pull nine, thirteen and twenty-two.
All right, nine, thirteen, twenty, twenty-two, okay. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, then, here we go. Item seven. Consider approval of the application for permanent extension of premises patio permit submitted by Mr. Chad Knudsen on behalf of the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge number twenty-three fifty to permanently expand their patio area to accommodate future events and activities. Item eight. Consider approval to purchase one license plate reader and enter into a service agreement from Vigilant Solutions, a sole source provider, in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred thirty dollars, utilizing awarded Homeland Security grant funds and waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the city. Item ten. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Cactus Asphalt for pavement maintenance and repair services for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item eleven. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Ellison Mills Construction based on the Penale County Contract Number two three three eight two eight R O Q J O C Civil Construction Services to reconstruct Raymond Street from Arizona Boulevard to Eighth Place, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Item twelve. Consider approval of entering in, entering an agreement with Ellison Mills Construction for on-call maintenance and repair services to repair damaged lines behind two eighty-five South Arizona Boulevard for an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, plus applicable taxes, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item fourteen. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement with Smith Co. Enterprises for asphalt and concrete crushing services to generate usable material for road repairs throughout the city, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item fifteen. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Franklin Striping, Inc., for the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five citywide road striping project, utilizing capital improvement funds in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Item sixteen. Consider approval to unfreeze capital sales tax fund for the purpose of purchasing a two K water truck for an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and utilizing capital sales tax and/or enterprise funds, waiving sealed bid requirements and allowing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item seventeen. Resolution number twenty-four dash eighteen. A resolution of the mayor and the council of the city of Coolidge, authorizing acceptance of Proposition two oh two grant funds in the amount of one, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars from the Healer River Indian Community and approving the use of the funds to build the dog park in phase one of the new regional park for the Coolidge Parks and Recreation. Item eighteen. Resolution number twenty-four dash nineteen. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, authorizing acceptance of Proposition two oh two grant funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the Healer River Indian Community and approving the use of the funds to purchase two message boards and an automated flagger for the Public Works Department. Item nineteen. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, authorizing acceptance of Proposition two oh two grant funds in the amount of eighty-three thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars from the Healer River Indian Community and approving the use of the funds to purchase eight mobile radios for the Coolidge Fire Department. Item twenty. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-one. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, authorizing acceptance Proposition two oh two grant funds in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars from the Healer River Indian Community and approving the use of the funds for the housing rehabilitation and emergency repair program within the city of Coolidge. Let's see here. Uh, item twenty-one. Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four. A resolution of the mayor and the city council of, of Coolidge, authorizing the submission of an application for the FY twenty twenty-four State Community Development Block Grant Funds, certifying that said application meets the community's previously identified housing and community development needs and the requirements of the state CDBG program and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in said application. Okay. All right. I need a motion to act. Oh, yep. Go ahead.
No, he pulled twenty-two. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I approve, I make a motion to approve all the consent agenda items that you read, which do not include nineteen thirteen and twenty-two, which were pulled.
Is that?
Second.
Okay, that was nine, thirteen and twenty-two, right. Okay. How is that? Okay, is motion a second, Norma? Yeah, I got, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Savedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnell?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item nine. Consider approval of entering into a lease extension agreement to extend the lease agreement between the city of Coolidge and Complete Parachute Solutions, Inc., for the purpose of extending the lease of the South Hanger at the Coolidge Municipal Airport for an additional five years effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding my item.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question. It does, I know that we're doing the lease extension here and I'm just curious, it doesn't have a dollar amount, I guess it is, it's computed by the Consumer Price Index or something? Do we have a dollar amount on what it's going to be going forward?
It's around forty thousand a year, um, but, but they've had some lease, uh, lease credits for some of the improvements they've made over the years and they're, they're kind of coming to the end of that right now.
Okay. And did, I just wanna, I'm not sure about this, but any, uh, revenue generated off leases at the airport, that has to go back into the airport, is correct? Is that correct or?
Yes, revenues generated on the airport only.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I had.
Anybody else? Okay, then I need a motion to act.
Move to approve item nine of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Item thirteen. Consider approval entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Western Emulsions based on the Penale County Contract Number two, twenty-four oh three twenty-eight IFB to fog seal city roads utilizing capital improvement funds in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the FY twenty-four twenty-five street work program. Mr. Navarro.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Uh, I know that this is all the ones that have been just recently, uh, redone, the streets that have been redone. Just curious about Northern Avenue east of the Boulevard, is there a reason why we still haven't gotten to that one yet?
Okay, so these aren't just the roads that have been done, we're also rejuvenating a lot of the other roads. Uh, you want to do a fog seal after every three, four years, you want to keep them on rotation. As for Northern Avenue, we're in talks right now with San Carlos Irrigation District about the coverts, so, um, they're willing to do some cost sharing to replace that pipe. Currently pulling numbers on it to do that section to see how much it's gonna cost. Once we get that figured out, we're gonna see how much they have in their budget and before we do the road, we have to do the pipe.
Right.
So it's, we're working on it and we've been trying to actually get this going for about two years now and so we're, we're in the middle of it now, so we're hoping to get at least a done this year.
I, I kind of figured it had something to do with the pipe underneath roadway there.
It's got everything to do with the pipe under the road.
That's, that's all I had, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, all right, then. If there's nothing further, I need a motion to act.
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve number, item number thirteen is read.
Sorry, so, okay, a motion a second, all, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-two. Consider approval of entering into, entering into a consent to sublease agreement between Cool Image Dance and Subtenants Act One Community Theater, Elijah Academy LLC and Horizons Tutoring LLC for the purpose of consent to sublease a building located at six seventy West Pima Avenue known as the Old Rec Building.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I just, real quick again, uh, I know that we have the consent to sublease here, I'm glad that we're finally getting this thing put in. I just want to be sure that the subleases have been provided a full copy of the lease between the city and Cool Image because basically by signing the consent, they're stating that they're bound to those terms as well. I just want to be sure that those have been present, given to those, uh, subleases or they will and that they will acknowledge that as well because I just, I know that in the past, we've had some issues, so I just want to be sure.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So I did speak with one of the potential subleases and, um, Cool Image is supposed to provide them with that. I told them that I would personally give them a copy this week if, if they didn't get it this week. So they will have that either from Cool Image or from myself before they sign this document agreeing to the terms of the, the regular lease.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the sublease is, is in Exhibit A to their consent, so they have to get it when they sign the consent because each sublessy is gonna sign the consent along with the lessy.
Right.
So they'll get a copy, they should get a copy of that.
Right, sure.
So we should have a full package once everybody signs off.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Mayor, I move to approve item twenty-two of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yep.
I'm gonna abstain from voting on the next item, please.
Okay. Get that, Norma?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is she ready?
You ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay. Item twenty-three. Under business. Unfreeze capital sales tax funds not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase a twenty twenty-three GMC Acacia?
Acadia.
Acadia from Garrett Motors waiving the sealed bid requirements in the best interest of the.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, um, we're here to talk about the, this would be the new city hall vehicle. Um, our finance director, Gabe Garcia, helped broker a deal with Garrett Motors to get us a deal on the Acadia. It's, uh, twenty twenty-three, low miles on it. Um, we had looked at Tahos, Tahos are going, we haven't even gotten a good solid Tahoe price because they haven't even come out yet, but they're shooting for somewhere around sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, we were able to secure this vehicle here for thirty-one thousand dollars, which is a very nice vehicle, has heated seat, all the bells and whistles, uh, sure beats the two thousand five Malibu that the city hall vehicle currently is. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Those heated seats will come in handy right now.
We can cook marshmallows, hot dogs, whatever you want, just roll them around.
Yeah, and it's still got almost ten thousand miles of warranty on it, doesn't it?
Yeah, so it still has factory warranty on it. It'd be a good solid vehicle for city hall, something that, uh, you're not embarrassed to drive around.
Okay, anybody, anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, then. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, then you motion to act.
Mayor, move to approve item number twenty-three is read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item twenty-four. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-three. A resolution of the mayor, the city council, the city of Coolidge, Penale County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results as provided by Penale County of the primary election held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And Norma, I guess that, I guess that depends on who you want to believe.
But, uh, we'll move forward. Okay. Um, honorable mayor, Vice Mayor Henry and members of the council, um, before you tonight is the resolution that canvases and adopts the results from the primary election held on July thirtieth. Based on those reports that we received from the county, again, they were unofficial. They did hold a meeting today. Uh, that item was on there and I hear it was over a thousand pages of the report that they were gonna canvass tonight and so, um, we were watching it all day. of the report that they were going to canvass tonight, and so we were watching it all day, CNN went in, my admin assistant went in, and we were sort of looking, I don't know if they ever got to that actual point of getting to that document, but before you tonight, we are going to, I'm asking council to go ahead and move or approve and adopt the resolution that canvases the following results. And again, this is based on the county. So we had a total of two thousand seventeen ballots cast, and the following four individuals received a majority of the votes. For mayor, or for John Thompson as mayor, we received one thousand, seven hundred and three votes. For candidate Ian Gillespie, we received nine hundred and five. For candidate Steve Hudson, one thousand forty-one, and for candidate Thomas Shoep, one thousand one hundred and eighty-two. Therefore, based on those results, and we canvassed them tonight, there's no need for a runoff in the general election, which is November, we will have that question for the twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty-five general plan, that'll be on the ballot for the general election, will not require a runoff. So I'm asking, I have any, you know, I can answer any questions you may have. This was a very, I don't want to say it was a confusing election, because, only because of the reporting is so different, the county was trying to, you know, provide us as much information as they could, but a lot of us surrounding clerks were just wondering how that moving up the election to July thirtieth and not having it later is helping, but we're getting through it, so we're here tonight. We have twenty days, no, no less than six, no more than twenty, to canvass the election. If something comes back and we have to change it, then we'll bring it back, we might have to hold a special meeting to bring that back, but I'm hoping that that's not the case. So I do apologize, I wish we could have more set reports.
Well, who would want to bring it back? The county or?
Well, the county, only if they notified us. Yeah, it would not be the city, it would only be if they came back to us and told us that we needed to change our numbers. So we're hoping that's not the case.
I guess, I guess we'll take our chances.
It's just one of those.
Anybody have any questions? I mean, I'm ready for a motion if.
Mayor, I move to approve a resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-three is read.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second, Norma?
Okay. Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Saavedra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess we're ready for the report from the mayor and the council. What happened? Oh, there's another item, I'm sorry. Okay, the mayor and city council shall discuss the possibility in taking action on offering a two-year employment agreement to Gilbert Lopez to serve the city of Coolidge as its city manager. Okay, are we supposed to discuss this?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's an employment agreement, a two-year employment agreement before you, the employment agreement is consistent, I think with the agreement you saw, the, the only last change that was made today was on page six, just at the top, it said that I added, consistent with the city code, in the first full sentence on page, on the top page six, just because there was no intent to change the city code, so I wanted to make sure that was clarified.
I didn't have any issues with, as we're following code, I guess I'm good with what we've got. Does anybody have any questions?
No, sir.
All right, then, I suppose we, we need to take a vote, huh?
Well, could we hear from that, the prospective city manager, real quick before?
He might talk himself out of a job.
Want to make sure he's not going to back out at the last minute.
You can ask him more questions.
I do want to say, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that just so people understand, the city accepted applications both internally and externally, feels like a couple months we've been involved in this, I'm not sure it has, I think it has been over a couple months, council had multiple meetings, interviewing various candidates, both internally and externally, before, and council saw some great candidates, not only here at the city, but also in the state of Arizona, and the state of Texas, so you, you really did evaluate a lot of different candidates before you came to your conclusion, but I did want the public to know that it was, you spent a lot of time on this process, and spent a lot of meetings, and a lot of different candidates were evaluated and many interviewed during the process.
Well, yeah, maybe we should hear a couple of minutes, if that's possible.
He said a couple of minutes ago.
He brought a speech.
Mayor Thompson, Vice Mayor Henry, council members, now I'm deeply honored to be considered as a city manager for the city of Coolidge, and as you saw in Rick's presentation, we have a really dedicated team, we've done, and that progress will continue, and I really look forward to working with Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council, and to achieve the goals and objectives and all the things you want to do, and move the city forward, so I'm really excited about this, and hopefully you'll approve my contract, and I can, it'd be great, thank you. Any questions? I kept it under two minutes, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make, we make a motion that we approve, item number twenty-five is read.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I was just close.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, there you go. All right, now we will do the report from the mayor and council. Councilmember Bagnall?
I just want to thank everybody that ran for the city council, you know, it's, it's nice to see that we have several people that want to put themselves out there, and, you know, be a part of the community and contribute by being on the city council, I want to congratulate the winners, but at the same time, I want to congratulate those folks that did run as well, so, thank you.
I have nothing.
You know, Rick, it's been an honor to work with you. I know that we've had, as long as I've worked here or lived here in the city of Coolidge, we've had quite a few city managers that I've been a part of, and I think that you are probably one of the best we've ever had, the things that you have accomplished for the city of Coolidge and for the citizens of Coolidge have been phenomenal. You know, I, I think of one thing that you did that stands out, and Mr. Garrett, when I say Mr. Garrett, I'm talking about Jim Garrett Senior, who has passed away, he was a strong advocate about the Coolidge Airport, back then it was called the Coolidge Florence Airport, and he went up to the state Capitol, I don't know how many times, with city leaders and state leaders, trying to get that airport annexed, and never got it done, and you and John went up there and came back with your tails between your legs and couldn't get it done, and you thought outside the box on a way to get that thing annexed, and it took a little while, but before they knew it, it was already annexed. And the reason that Mr. Garrett was so adamant about it is, of course, he was a fighter pilot for the Marine Corps, but he saw a vision of that airport being something someday, and I don't know if I'm going to live long enough to see it, but it is, I mean, you're in between two metropolitan areas in Tucson and Phoenix, and most of the airports are getting landlocked, and with Procter and Gamble coming here, using the railroad, using the airport, close to the interstate, I think one of these days, the Coolidge Airport, and that Coolidge Florence, the Coolidge Airport is going to be something, and it's because of you, and I want to thank you very much. You know, I know you wanted to put another two years out, decided to retire early, there's, you know, there's, there's nobody perfect in this world, and, you know, some people didn't like some of the decisions you made, and wanted to see you leave a little bit early, and I wish that you would stay a little bit longer, but I want to thank you very much, Rick, for what you've done, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, a couple things, like Bagnall said, I want to congratulate all the new council member elects, and then, of course, Steve and the mayor for reelection, and then all the candidates who did not win, just getting out there and offering yourself to this role is, it's, it's something in, of itself. I also want to thank Hila River, a lot of the Indian communities provide every year a certain amount of money for grants, so we appreciate them. Gilbert, look forward to you and your leadership, I know it'll be a smooth transition staying in-house, but like Dennis said, we interviewed a lot of different candidates across the state and some couple out of state, and you really did shine as the leader and bringing the most experience on day one to this role, so I look forward to that. Rick, Hudson said it pretty well, but you've been a mentor to me on getting here as probably your youngest boss you've ever experienced, but I look forward to you potentially joining Casa Grande Council one day. But no, I, I really do want to thank you for all your work over the, over your tenure, especially here at the city of Coolidge.
Thank you.
I too wanted to congratulate the ones that ran and won, and the ones that, I was glad to see we had so many, because it's so hard to get people to come out and run for the different positions, or even for our little boards and commissions. I do want to congratulate, we do have a new director that we were not told about, and that's Bridget Ashford for HR, I would like to congratulate you. Take a little heat off of Norma.
But yes, I do appreciate that. I am glad that she was on my team, and she's going to be, she's a great asset to the city of Coolidge, she's going to be great at that position, and she still has me here, so I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, so we can still work together if needed, but thank you.
Mr. Miller? I didn't recognize this man to my right, I feel bad that I didn't, this is my right-hand man right here, he keeps me out of trouble. I rely heavily on Dennis and his office, Ann and Tina, I thank them for all of their support on behalf of the city. This lady right here, on my left, she's the glue, I call her La Informa, La Informa Norma. She's a, she's a stabilizing force, and I appreciate all of her efforts, every one of my department heads that I've had the pleasure of working with, I appreciate them all, they, they work very hard for you, and for the citizens of Coolidge. We've got some excellent department heads, I also am glad that we brought on Bridget as a department head, I wanted to get that done before I left, that was one of the last things I wanted to do, just recently done, she has helped me a lot with some very difficult personnel issues in the past, and appreciate her advice and her, and I know she'll do a really good job there. I miss you guys, I miss, miss the city of Coolidge. I, I feel like I lived here, I only slept in Casa Grande, I went there to go to sleep, but I lived here, supported our businesses, our nonprofit organizations, I'm going to still stay very active with the local Kiwanis Club, one of my first efforts is going to be over there to help them get that little key club building cleaned out, I'm going to try to get that started. I'm not going to disappear, I'm going to kind of watch the things happen around here, it's going to be a very successful time for Coolidge, very grateful again for the support, I'm going to congratulate Gilbert, and Gilbert's going to do a great job, I know he has the support of our department heads, and it will be a smooth transition, and most of all, I'm hopeful that you guys will continue to work together and be a strong team. It's okay to have differences of opinion, nothing wrong with that, I think differences of, of opinion make for better decisions when the conversation's made and had, nothing wrong with that as long as you're respectful to each other, and I appreciate the respect that you've given me, and with that, I'm going to be retiring and traveling and fishing and enjoying the cool weather up in Pine Top and rock collecting and doing all those fun things, probably a little consulting time to time, because I don't want to get bored, I'm not going to just sit at home and watch TV and die, I'm going to be out there doing some work, so, thank you all.
Well, Rick, as always, councilmember Hudson stole my thunder, I was going to tell the story about the time we went to visit the, the real estate goddess for the state of Arizona, and they told us they'd help, and they'd call us, and I'm still probably ten years later waiting on her to call us, but it was a pretty good deal, he pulled a pretty good one on, and by the time they realized what happened, the airport was already in the city, and then, it used to be the Florence Coolidge Airport, they didn't want it, and Tom Rankin still wants it, but I tell him that you can't have some of it now, so that's a good deal, but one of the things that a lot of people don't know that are around here now, that, you know, if you watch that, that's about, that's about eight years worth of stuff right there, that's a lot. I was on the council for ten years before that, eight years, there wasn't much done in that ten years, so that's a lot, but I will say this, one of the things that, that he did that really, most people don't know about, is we didn't have any money when he first hired on, and we needed a master plan, because everybody was after us, and so in his spare time, he wrote our master plan, and I think it was going to cost us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get one done, and he did it on the weekends, in the evenings, so that's the kind of guy Rick Miller is, so I'm just saying, he, he's done a lot for Coolidge, and I, I want to thank you for everything you've done, and, you know, I hope you don't catch any more fish, because it's just not right, so, thank you, and, and Gilbert, we're going to do what we can to get him going, but man, I don't know, we'll see if we can, but anyways, I need a motion to adjourn. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody.